Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inglewood City Council Orientation Session. This is a time for council to the agenda. And if it's things that they want to discuss, any questions that they have with the administration is not a time to do so. So let's just get right into the agenda. Council, as you noticed on the agenda, just saw one major change overall, and just making sure it's fine with the agenda. Our new city clerk took a notice that what we were doing is it relates to the outline? And suggested that prayer should come before we start the city's business. So we will have prayer first when we call for the general meeting. And then after that, we will have pledges of allegiance and so on. Just making sure that no one has any objections towards that. Or any questions or comments. Can everybody hear me? Okay, thank you. Thank you, council. All right then, so the agenda will flow as such. All right then, of course, just going through the agenda presentation from Easter Housing as it relates to Comcast Lift Zone. Will be on the agenda tonight. And then previous business as it relates to enterprise fleet management. All of the things that you asked for should be in your packet. Does the council have any questions in regards to that item?
I froze, Mr. Mayor, so I don't, I didn't hear anything, except does council have any questions in regards to that item?
Yeah, I'm sorry, as it relates to the item A on previous business.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
And we do have Eric here with us, of course, Mr. Bivens is on the line, Chief of Police is on the line. Just making sure, again, if you have any questions as it related to that item. We will be wanting to take action on this particular item this evening. Any questions from the body?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes, in the contract, it mentions fees and things of that nature. But I don't see a fee schedule anywhere, additional fees. Is this a percentage? It also stipulates states that these cars are only driven fifteen thousand miles a year. Is that correct too?
All right.
Without penalty or something of that nature?
Mr. Mayor, I can field those questions if you'd like.
Yeah, please, Eric, thank you.
Councilwoman, the additional fees and schedules come after the vehicles arrive. So I think what you're referring to is the master equity lease agreement, right?
I'm referring to, hang on, I'll get you the page here.
Sure.
So on page ten. The fourth paragraph, and I don't know how many lines down, but it's section C. And it says vehicle with a with a term of thirty-six months. And greater than forty-five thousand miles, so that's fifteen thousand miles a year. And then it refers to additional fees. Or some sort of fee that is charged if, I guess, we go over it like any other lease agreement would be, you know?
Yeah.
But I don't, I just don't see those. And I think if I'm going to be doing things on money fees, I would, you know, want to know what those are prior to.
Yeah, that's a great question. So section three C is actually for, it's mainly for for-profit businesses. It allows us to treat the leases as operating leases. And we can also amend those for, to be treated as capital leases. But again, this is for for-profit companies only and how they're treating these leases for tax considerations. Obviously, the city is a tax-free entity. So as far as, you know, how the leases are treated. Capital or operating for tax purposes, it has no bearing on the city's finances at all.
So there are no extra charges? There's just that flat fee you put in the beginning, like fifty-four thousand for the police department and something else for fire?
Yeah, that was the approximate, yeah, that was the approximate capital outlay. And also, you know, the other thing with that, our leases have no over-mileage penalties or wear and tear penalties. The part of that section three C again is what allows us to treat the leases as operating leases. Because there needs to be like a guarantee of a twenty percent residual value of the delivered cost. Again, that has no bearing on the city's treatment of the leases because the city is a tax-free entity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, council, again, as it relates to the management program that we're trying to initiate here in the city of Inglewood. Is there any other questions? For Eric? I know some questions may come up during the regular council meetings, so. As it relates to the fleet itself, are all minds satisfied as it relates to where the cars are going? And how they're being laid out? Mr. Bivens is on the line to speak about that if we need to. Any questions, comments, concerns as it relates to that? All right. Moving into item B.
This councilwoman, Washington.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Washington.
In regards to item B, I wish, I would like to see if we could actually have a special meeting for that. Instead of actually having this a part of this agenda. Because I'm sure the community wants to be able to weigh in and we could have kind of a separate meeting for this. I'm not sure if my colleagues would agree to it or not. But that was a suggestion.
Yeah, I think that that would be appropriate. I know that I received email over the over the last couple of days as it relates to it being added to the agenda again. We wanted to put it on the agenda as it relates to having a public discussion on what items needed to be changed. So we wouldn't necessarily be doing any, anything against the rules, Robert Rules of Orders and the Open Meetings Act. And communicating this council between each other via email and making any changes to anything that we would look to bring before this body. So I'm definitely looking forward to having a discussion with the, with the general public. As I had mentioned at the last meeting, I'm doing a community forum type of deal. And I think that it makes more sense that if we had a special meeting of the council, I'm had a special meeting. Had the developer come out, do a presentation along with our attorneys. McKenna and Associates, they're looking to weigh in as well, our city planner. And then we can have, you know, feedback from the general public. And the body can have any, you know, of course, any questions that they may have or changes that they would look to see happen during that time. And then we can have some action on this item. Because this is a big item within the city. So I know that it's going to take some discussion, so I wouldn't be opposed to having a special meeting if we could look to possibly do it. Maybe a week or two, a couple of weeks out. You know, I don't know if anybody on the body, if Councilwoman, if you had any particular dates that you were looking at, throw out there. But I would say at least give us a couple of weeks so we can get it out to the general public. Because I know a lot of people have been wanting to weigh in about this particular project.
Would this special meeting be in person or Zoom? Because we're not meeting in person right now, so yeah, we'd be in Zoom. So I mean, we can all, between my colleagues, I guess, decide on the day. You know, agree to it.
How does next, how does next Thursday, the twenty-ninth? At five o'clock, look for the body. And we can have the city clerk put that out. Put a couple of dates out there. And then and put it back out to the general public what we decided. That's something that the body would be willing to do.
I'm good with that date. That date is good with me. The twenty-ninth.
I don't know if at five o'clock, six o'clock would work. Get time, people, you know, people to get off of work and be able to chime in. And then to give us enough time to be able to put it out there for people to be able to chime in. And that's the one thing that we want to be able to have people do. People actually be able to come in and comment as it relates to this particular topic.
I'm good.
So the twenty-ninth, you said twenty-ninth at five o'clock?
Five or six, it's up to you all.
Looks like Thursday I'm not available.
Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday, Wednesday for me for sure.
So if we could, then we'll just, we could, if it pleases this body, we'll have the city clerk put out and just do a poll of everybody between those two days. See what works. So then we can let the developer know as well. And we can get some folks to chime in. So I would like to remove this item from the agenda for tonight as it relates to discussion action. And then we'll move to see if we can get a special meeting on the docket for this. Okay. All right, moving into new business, item A, any questions as it relates to that? Item B. Any questions on item B? Item C, before we get started, I wanted to have David, our attorney, you just weigh in on item C and then we can go from there. David?
Good evening, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Issue regarding item C was brought to my attention. I received the, the contract today regarding the neighborhood stabilization program. And from reviewing the contract that the city entered into with select contractors a while ago in response to the RFQ. It was apparent that the, the program called for a three-year program. So I see this on the agenda and I see after reviewing the contract. I know Pro Tim Howard has some questions about some new contractors as well not being approved by the city. I believe it would be appropriate for a new RFQ to issue if the city is accepting new vendors under this program. However, the, the vendors that are currently in the program have been approved already. And if the three years hasn't elapsed, I would argue that they are still, as long as they're in compliance with all the other terms of the stable neighborhood stabilization program. They, they do not have to be re-approved because the contract and the agreement called for three years. So unless we're adding new vendors, it's not necessary to publish and approve a new RFQ. And I'm not aware, I think you mentioned there may be some new vendors on there. If that is the case, I think those would need council approval along with the new RFQ. But the previously existing vendors, I do not need reapproval by this body.
Who are those people that don't need approval?
I don't have this member, Wiley. Whoever
I do.
Previously approved. I don't know that for myself.
Yeah, let's see here. On this. Lot of paper to go through, excuse me. So omitting, if you go to page sixty-eight. Omitting AJTP Investments. Starting from the bottom, that's the very one at the bottom, and that is a local contractor, Anthony Paisley, that wanted to be considered for the program. But just hearing what David said, we wouldn't necessarily have time to do that based off of First Right to Refusal Program. Also Sammy Investment LLC. And AAHM Investments. Everyone else is part of the actual program, the original program that was approved through the previous council and administration. Councilman, you're on mute. I think you were talking.
I would just ask a question, couldn't we just add them on?
Yeah, I think what David was saying. David?
Yeah, the, the initial vendors were approved pursuant to a process in RFQ, remember, Williams? So I think in order to, for the the same procedure should be done unless this council wants to leave the current group in place. And just, you know, vet the two new vendors or three, however many there are. But I would think it'd probably be better form to go through the same process that was approved three years ago.
I don't understand, I mean, we got three that, new ones is going on there, and the old ones, are we taking the old ones off?
Not my understanding, that should be moving the old ones, no.
Yeah, the old ones will stay, stay in place pursuant to the agreement that they have with the council. I am familiar that, you know, it was a, a couple of vendors actually approved after the RFQ process. David, after initial, the first round of the RFQ process, then it was a couple of other vendors approved at a just a regular council meeting.
Okay, you know what, now that you say that, I do seem to recall that, but perhaps another council person that was present can speak to that. How, how they got approved after the initial RFQ? And if, whether or not this body wants to proceed going forward in a similar format?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, council.
I can't remember the exact process. However, I know when we did approve some, if you will, if you will say after the fact, we got all of the exact same information that was requested from any of the candidates. So like the whole packet displaying like their financials and all the other stuff that's requested in the packet. And we had that option to go through it at a council meeting or prior to a council meeting and then vote on it adequately. But all of the information was in the packet as far as financials, being in compliance with other properties and things of that nature.
I do remember that, I think I was at that meeting. Yeah, so again, this was just to encourage local participation. These guys are actually, I know AT, I mean AJTP is Anthony Paisley Investment Group here locally in the city of Inglewood. And then AAH Investments is the gentleman that owns the First Choice Windows. He was looking at some things through the county and I contacted our city realtor. And after talking to the city realtor, you know, I sent him the information and he did send me back the actual packet, but he didn't send it back until today. So I didn't necessarily want to, you know, bombard this body with all of that information.
Well, Mayor, I think, you know, now that Member Chisholm says that, I think it's the will of the body. If you all want to add or include additional vendors without, you know, without any reason to scrap the, the vendors that are already present. You know, if you collect the same information and, you know, vet the information, if the council votes to include additional contractors, you know, that would be the, the council's prerogative. City's prerogative.
If, if all the other contractors are in good standing, and these other three need to be added and they are good standing, they meet all the criteria. I don't see why we just couldn't add them, just keep on going.
We don't have that information.
Right, yeah, so we would, we, we would need to, if we were looking to do that, to encourage, it's really just to encourage local participation. Then we would need to gather that information and give it to this body. So, you know, if it was the body's will to, you know, table this, table this item or even remove this item from the agenda. Because we do have virtual
To make it fair there, Mr. Mayor, what I'm saying is this, okay, we never receive any information from the, from the previous contractors, okay? So if that's the case, we want, we need to get information for all of them. We are new on council, okay? All right, if he want to go that route, then I think we need to get the communication from, get all of, get all of the information from all, all of the vendors.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily that, that the councilman was being adverse to what we were talking about. I think that, you know, it's just appropriate as it relates to moving forward. Because I understand that we did have a request for qualifications go out into the community several years back and they were selected through the process, so.
But what I'm, what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, we don't know the background of the one, previous ones that you have.
Okay.
What I'm saying, as a new council person, so, I mean.
If I could make a
David to give us some information, because we do.
If I could make a suggestion.
Yeah.
Just to the body and if everybody agreed, I know that, you know, I know we have a lot of meetings, a lot of scenes going on. But at the same time, you know, the NSP program is a very important program as it relates to the First Right to Refusal process through the state, through the county. Because number, number one, if we just decide not to participate as a community, then those properties will go into the county's bank for public auction and anybody can just get the properties. So that would eliminate our employees being able to qualify for properties through this program without having to bid up against private investors. Also too, the city stands to gain depending on how many properties that the city looks at and say that, you know, we're going to, we're going to take these properties. And the vendors are going to pay the county, not the city. The city will have to write a check. We're actually, you know, from the taxes that's owed, then the actual vendor would have to write a check to us. And then we write a check to the county, but we would actually put a thousand dollar administrative fee on top of that. So we're looking to create some, some revenue as well. So say for instance, if, if we, you know, keep thirty properties within the city that we're putting through the neighborhood stabilization program. Then we would charge our vendors a thousand dollars above that, creating a stream of revenue possibly up to thirty thousand dollars. So if, you know, it pleases this body, we can remove this item and look at Thursday. We can put everybody's information from everybody that's in the program now. All of the contracts that were approved already, so everybody can look at them, we can have them back to everybody tomorrow by noon. We can look at like a Thursday special meeting to talk about this.
I think one of the council persons, I think it was Regina, indicated she couldn't meet Thursday.
I'm talking about this Thursday. Because we have to, with, with the timeline with the county, they're, they're saying that you have to either let us know you're going to be a part of the program or you're not. So we have to let them know by Friday in the business. So if we had a meeting this Thursday to talk about the neighborhood stabilization program, all of the new members on council get all of the information for the approved contractors and then look at the approved contractors. And any other ideas that we want to throw forth, because actually looking at the, the actual contract as it relates to employees of the city of Inglewood. Only full-time employees can actually purchase properties to live, to live in.
Then also with that, Mr. Chair, is that, I mean, you know, we talk about full-time employees, part-time employees or, you know, I mean, would the council be able to chime in with that? Because they are city employees. And then also with the eligibility with the twenty percent of the property list. Now, what, what is the twenty percent? Is it twenty percent of what kind of list? You know, the, the ones that the, that the city throws away, is it the, you know, top portion of the list? Is it the bottom portion of the list? So, you know, I'm not opposed to meeting on, on that Thursday to kind of hash out some of these things. Or, you know, if you come back with some, you know, different types of suggestions with it. I'd like to ask the attorney a question.
Go ahead.
You got full-time employees, what about the part-time employees? I mean, is that fair? Because you got full-time employees and then you got people that's been part-time with you for years that might decide to want to be a resident of the city and be, be, delete it from that participation?
But that was a policy decision and it certainly has plus and minuses. And I don't, I don't want to go on public record and, and say that, you know, one class of people may be getting treated differently than other class of people. But I'll speak to you that later this week if you like, after I look at the policy, remember, Williams?
Okay. Mr. Chair, you know, I mean, is this going to be to the, to the employees as a whole in the organization? Because we do want, you know, to, you know, promote the residents or the city employees to be able to have an opportunity to bid on these properties before even they go out to, to the developers. I mean, you know, I understand we have some homegrown developers, but also we want to, we want to grow this incentive to employees within the city as well. And does that, as I stated before, does that go for all of the employees? Or does that exclude members of council who is considered employees? It, it doesn't say that in this policy. So maybe some of you who were there before can maybe chime in on that.
Mr. Chair?
Mayor Proton?
Hi, um, we are elected officials, so we were excluded out of that. Out of that, at, at, you know. When it started, we never was able to get anything because we are not even, we are not a city of employees, we are elected officials. So we did not, the option wasn't there for us. But let me say this, going back through my notes. The program started in two thousand seventeen, it is now two thousand and twenty-one. So I would be encouraged that all of them have to resubmit. Their, what's going, you know, their portfolio tours, because it's been past three years. And I'm looking at my notes and a lot of these vendors that's on this approved NSP never came through us. I got a list, I kept a copy of everything that we did on this project. DMK was never on our list, our original list. Actual closure was not on our list. POC Group LLC was not on our list. New Star Construction was not on our list. SEW LLC was not on our list. I'm not sure what VE Properties, but we did have a Vistio at that time. AAMHM was not on our list. So I'm not sure who the VE property was because it was not on our list. Michigan Suburban LLC and all the way down was never on our list. So I'm not, pardon me?
How did they get on there?
I don't know how they got on there, but my notes, when we approved, let me tell you, the first group that we approved was City Assets, Heights Realtor. Home Team Holding, HP Snap Investment, Team Cares, Vistio Management. Now, let me tell you the ones that we did never, it never came before us. CM and Realtor, Vincent, Progressive, Platinum and M313. I know we did bought some property in two thousand eight, but we, if we look, go back into our notes, or go back into the tapes. This was discussed, that those vendors were never approved. So, I mean, but I'm not going So, I mean, I'm, but I'm not going backwards. So what I would be inclined to do is do a, do a, a, a new RF, whatever you call it, RFQ. And have, because it's been three years. It's been longer than three years. And we haven't done this program since two thousand and eighteen. So between now and between two thousand eighteen and nine, things may have changed with some of these developers. So is, I mean, we have to maybe, uh, look to see if they still in, uh, the same standards that the contract said. Uh, um, if you read your contract, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars capital. They have to have that in order to even be in this program.
Well, I, I think, I, I can't agree with you then, Sister Howard. If they've never been approved by council, I think then we need to just go from here and, and create, create the contractors that, that we feel is gonna be doing the job and meet the requirement.
Right, and, 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 and we have not.
Let's stay on task though. Let me say this, that.
The dates in here in this contract is the same as two thousand eighteen, two thousand seventeen. Huh?
Yeah, no, I was just.
The dates are wrong in this contract. So it's just, I mean, this contract was written up and done by Chardaine, who's no longer with this, with this organization. But everything that we got was the same. But and the dates was the same as though we was starting off in two thousand seven, two thousand eighteen. So those dates will need to be changed. We don't even know if RFQ went out because they had guidelines and schedules to which they were supposed to adhere to before they came to council. None of that was done. So when, um, and this is the thing that, and I'm not, I'm talking for me, but this is the thing that I don't have a problem with bringing anybody on board. But we gotta have the stuff. We gotta have everything that we need to make, I mean, we shouldn't be on here talking about this now. Everything should have been provided for us. And then all we had to do was say yea and nay. But I'm finding myself gotta go do a lot of homework. Now, I did look at all of those properties online. Now, most of them are boarded up. So what are we doing with those? I do know we still have a lot of property that was in, that was brought, uh, in this program that we still haven't sold. So, I'm not sure what we doing.
Yeah, Mayor Proton Howard, when you say that you had to do a lot of homework, uh, you know, this with all due respect, ma'am, I do run the administration day-to-day, so we could have actually talked about this beforehand. Let me, let me, let me say this because a number of those ones that you said that you didn't approve, you actually were at those meetings when they were approved.
And I didn't approve, and I didn't, me, I didn't approve.
But the body did, so.
But I said me. And, but I'm letting you, but I'm letting you know what's going on.
A public official, you can't say you did.
Say, okay, we all did, but that's why we have yea, nay. That's why we have roll call. But I'm not going back to that. I'm not go, I don't want to go back to that. I'm just telling you what the process was. Okay, I don't care what happened back then. No, but what I'm saying is they was not approved.
They, they were approved by the.
Okay, well, if they was approved, then we, you gonna go back and see the documents then? Because I was the one saying they never came to us, but I'm not gonna try to do that because it's been between two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. It's two thousand and twenty-one now, so everybody got to give us a portfolio and start fresh. But it wasn't done like that. And if you guys knew that you, you are an administrator. But when you bring stuff to council, it's gotta be right. We don't have.
You're saying that it's not right, but it is.
You got developers on here. We don't know, I'm looking on the internet. I don't know who these people are. You do, but you shouldn't give them, you should have given us that, that, that.
Out of the, out of the, out of the twenty developers that you have on there, you approved seventeen of them.
Okay, what I'm saying to you. What I'm saying to you is that is investors on here that's not on here, but at the same time.
Name those ones.
Okay, and, but, but, but if you say you did it right, we should have had information in front of our faces. That way they could have been on. Now they, now, if they don't have a special meeting, they left out. But you've been on council before. You know what council is looking for. That, and I'm not trying to get on you and that, but you've been on council before. You know what we looking for.
Contradictory to what. All of the people that you said weren't approved by the body and they were.
Okay, okay.
Statement, how can we even?
I gave you the first list that came to us when it first started. The second list that I gave you, never, we approved some houses, but we never knew that those and vendors was associated to those properties. Now, that's what I'm saying to you.
Would just be clear when you're speaking in the public about what you're saying.
Well, okay, well, yeah, that's all you had to, that's all you had to ask me is to repeat myself and I would have. But like I said, we have new council people on here that have no clue, but they wasn't giving no information.
Man, with page fifty-seven, if you look at it, it says that the project year is twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. I'm sorry, Councilman Chisholm, go ahead.
I was gonna say, um, I, I, I hear what Mayor Proton is saying. I hear what Reverend Williams is saying. Attorney Jones has already addressed it. He said he was gonna review the contract. And those who had already exceeded the three-year limit, yes, their information should come back before us and we should vote on those to approve them again. And as has been stated, um, that stuff has been out there already. So I think we're kind of spinning our wheels on that one because it looks like we're gonna be getting all the information to look at all of the, all of the vendors to vote on it now. And I had wanted to ask just from how I was looking at the package. Is this three things that are in this one vote, which would be the approval to enter into the program with the county? The approval to purchase those particular, uh, uh, I'm sorry, acquire those properties that are out there for tax, back taxes. And then three, to approve either all the vendors, which looks like it's gonna be, or additional vendors. Is that three votes in there or, or three separate items in there?
Right, you know, I would think that they would be three separate items. However, you know, actually having the attorney now, and from my understanding, I thought that, that Attorney Jones had drafted this because he was the city attorney at the time. But from my understanding, he did not. So, um, from him looking over it, that's why I was saying, okay, let's let him get all the information and then let's have a special meeting as it relates to this. Because, you know, he, he, he was not the attorney of record that put this together.
What did I deadline for, to, to respond to the county, Mr. Mayor?
This Friday. Whether or not we're gonna participate in the program or not.
Okay, that, that's the only thing that we had to let the county know that we're gonna participate in the program?
Correct.
Okay, so we are gonna participate in the program then, I understand. So we can, we can vote on that, am I correct?
Well, if we, if we agree that we have a special meeting on Thursday, we can do it all in one shot. If that's the case.
Okay.
Because looking at this RF, RFQ and from, from, from listening to the attorney, um, really, the, it covered that part of it as it relates to the city. You know, the city had already approved vendors already and have approved vendors to be a part of the program. So the program is perpetual, it's ongoing each year. You know, the vendors are the ones that need to come back before the council to be approved. So from, from my understanding, but again, you know, I want to have complete clarity by having the attorney chime in because I'm not an attorney. Councilman Chisholm.
Yes, two more things. Um, I heard my colleagues talk about city officials being able to participate in this project as well as part-time employees. With the part-time employees, I don't think they were intentionally left out. I, I think the intent was nine out of ten times, you rarely have part-time employees who want to opt in. But I think the option for them to, for them to opt in should be there. And just like the vendors, the thing was, we want them to be able to participate, but we also want them to be able to renovate the home. Because some of these homes that they would be getting for the back taxes were very dilapidated. And I'm, I'm just speaking, I'm not saying what anybody makes or anything like that. But sometimes part-time employees don't make a full or a salary in America, if you will, because this is not just Inster-wide. Um, to really do the improvements and pay the bills and everything like that. And what I think the thought was, we would hate for a part-time employee to opt in, not be able to afford it or pay the taxes in full or something like that. And then we full three sixty back around in this same situation. But I am for part-time employees being able to participate in this. So we're not skewing or looking like it's biased or showing favoritism to one group of employees. And the, uh, the third thing with the city officials. All of those thoughts had went through my head too when this program first came out, because I thought about it. So, oh, that would be pretty cool to city officials get to opt in. But when you start talking about ethics and morals and you're talking about optics. When you create a program that you have to vote on and then you say you should be a part of it too, that looks kind of shake. Because if we all, and I'm just using us for an example because we're already elected officials, all opted into that program and sat up here and bought houses and all of us are elected together and then we all voting on each other's houses, that's messy. And it looks like we're going in picking these houses out for ourselves and, or I might be mad because Reverend Williams got this house and I wanted that house or vice versa. So it, it creates, you know, some animosity amongst us. Whereas I, I get it. And why should we be excluded from it? But when we're voting on it and having to create the policy and stuff like that for it, 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 it really gets messy. It's almost like signing your own check, if you will. And I'm just using it as an example. But that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, and those, Mr. Chair, and those are the things that should be within this policy. If that's the case, that, you know, people may say it's gonna be messy, we should not be considered as, you know, any type of city employees or slash elected officials. I mean, because, you, you know, we are still citizens of this community as well. So what my thoughts would be is that we continue to try to put these homes whi- whichever they may be into the hands of our residents or our citizens. Or, or, uh, uh, our city employees. So make that a part of the, you know, policy because it doesn't say in this policy, when this policy was, was drawn up, that it excluded uh, city officials slash, and, you know, uh, employees. Now, if you are a part-time employee, my thing is you should still have the opportunity to, to bid in or weigh in on any of these homes, regardless of your status. If you can't afford it, I'm sure you would not, you know, try, try to, you know, to, to opt in, but you should afford the opportunity. Because the city employees should have that right, not, you know, people coming as, as, you know, uh, as vendors coming into the city to be able to just snatch up all these homes from the city employees or from the residents here. So it should be spelled out. You know, if that was the intent of the council back then, you know, these things should be, you know, spelled out to, in the, in this policy, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and that's why I was saying again, you know, for us, you know, we remove this item from the agenda. Give the city attorney a, a chance to really go through, um, everything, all the questions and discussions that we've heard here in orientation. Be able to, uh, answer those and then have a special meeting for this item. Because I'm with you too, uh, councilmen, as it relates to, um, being able to have people that live in our community, invest into our community and have an opportunity to do so, um, ethically and above board with the process. So, so I get that. All right, if the body is okay with that again, then I'll have, uh, the city clerk, um, send out, um, time, see who's all available, and then we'll post it if we could, um, if we could do that. So we're gonna remove this item from the agenda for tonight. Um, the rest of the stuff is. I'm sorry, I think I hurt somebody.
That was me, that's, um, this Mayor Proton. On the developer acquisition, redevelopment resale. Now, was, was there RFQ?
Yeah, RFQ went out in two thousand and eighteen, looked like.
Okay, so these new investors didn't have, so you didn't put one out for this, for the new investors?
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have been that because you guys did approve some back in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen that didn't go through the RFQ process.
Okay, but, but I'm just looking on the contract and that's what the contract stated, that that's what was supposed to be done. The city of Inster is seeking to request qualification, RFQ from qualified developers to provide professional service to acquire. Um, to sell residence tax foreclosed properties. I'm just looking at the contract that we had from two thousand and nineteen.
Right, yeah, that, that's what you guys did then. And then the program was supposed to run for, for three years with the investors that you, that you said that you would have, you know, each year, they would be involved in the program. And then if it was a new investor, then they would be brought to the council, which we can have the city clerk go through and look at some of the developers that's on here that you guys approved after the RFQ process. I wouldn't have part of that councilmatic body. I believe you were councilwoman.
Yeah.
So, so as it relates to that, I know RFQ didn't go out then. So I didn't think that it was appropriate to do a RFQ now.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, you know, we got some information on there and some information that we didn't get on there, but I'm just going looking at the contract that that's been put before me, um, that was back in, not two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. And I'm sure it's got down here contractual agreement for the acquisition for the developers. A contract executed between the city of Inster and successful firms. Successful firms will be required to have a minimum two hundred and fifty thousand in the form of line credit. Now, that's something that we have to look through and I don't think.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that.
I don't know if you have time between now and Thursday to, if we going off of this contract, then we should do it right.
Yeah, and if they don't, then if they don't submit the information, then they won't be considered for your approval. So let's move on. We'll talk about that on Thursday, if everybody's okay with that. And we'll have a special meeting as it relates to the NSP program, Neighborhood Stabilization Program here in the city of Inster. Um, for the councilmatic body to consider, um, you know, those new vendors, but also to look at the qualification of the old vendors. Along with, uh, information as it relates to, um, the attorney being able to come back and talk to us about part-time employees. Um, you know, with the, with the policy itself. And then of course, too, you know, looking at the charter, you know, I get elected officials and understand, you know, integrity and, you know, being able to, you know, be, be a part of this program. I understand both sides of it. I think that is the way that you lay it out as it relates to the policy. And the policy is adhered to, we shouldn't have any murky water. So let's look at it and then go from there.
Yeah, because you can, you can, you can also abstain from what you, what you're voting on if you got a property that you're trying to bid on. So you can abstain from that.
Right.
Yeah, so let's talk about it then. All right then, so we're gonna move forward on that. We do have a couple of closed session items. If it pleases this body, we'll go into closed session. David, if you could, please.
Yeah, we have, uh, two closed session items that, to discuss, uh, the horn matter and the blackwell matter.
Also too, let's add in there, uh, Alex Legion for Chief Riley to come in and speak to us in relates to that, Alex Legion matter. So we can have Chief Riley come in first and then, uh, we go from there. So motion to go into closed session on those items?
We'll move.
There's support?
Supports.
Moved and properly supported. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
I'm off mute, yes. Kay. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard.
Yes.
All right then, we'll be going into closed session to the general public and we'll be right out to be able to start the meeting on time at seven. Troy, if you could, please, thank you. And let's get Chief Riley in first with us. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inster City Council. Today is Monday, July the nineteenth, twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-one. And the time is now seven oh five PM. So I call this meeting to order. Reverend Williams, if you could, please, as we stand, you lead us off into prayer and then right after that, we'll go into the pledge of allegiance.
Oh God, we come right now, no other way but to thank you. Thank you for our health, life and strength. Thank you for watching over the city of Inster. Father, we just thank you as you bind us together with love, unity and strength. Continue to bless this city as we continue to make it the greatest love city it ever can be. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you very much. Roll call, please, City Clerk.
Yes. Mayor Wembly.
Here, reporting from the city of Hall, I'm sorry, sorry, the city of. Here, reporting from the City of Hall, uh, I'm sorry, sorry, the City of Hall, City of Hall, the City of Inster, City Hall.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Here, reporting remote from my home in the City of Inster.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes, reporting, um, remotely from my home in the City of Inster, County, uh, County of Wayne, Michigan.
Councilmember Williams.
Here at my home, uh, in the City of Inster, County of Wayne.
Councilmember Washington.
Present. Appearing from my home in the City of Inster and the County of Wayne.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Present, reporting virtually from my home, Inster, Michigan, County of Wayne.
And Councilmember Shaw.
You're a mute councilman.
Here in the City of Inster.
Okay.
We have a...
We have a squad.
All right, good then. Moving right into the next item on the agenda. Approval of the agenda with the emissions of, under previous business, item B, National Rhythm Blues Hall of Fame. And then under new business, item C, um, the Inster Neighborhood Stabilization Program, where we will be looking to have special meetings for those two items of the council. Wish you pleasure.
Go move.
Is there support?
Support.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make an addition to the agenda.
I'm sorry, ma'am, speak up now.
Yes, I'd like to make an addition to the agenda.
Ma'am, it's, it's like you go, it's like you go in, like you're, you get up close to your mic and then you maybe sit back and you go away from your mic. So we can't hear you.
Okay, um, I'd like to...
Now you're muffled.
I need to make a motion. Can you hear me now?
I can't hear you now.
Okay, well, um, I, uh, I don't know what else to do because I'm right up on the mic.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion that the City of Inster, the council, exercised their mayorial veto power granted in section seven one, uh, seven point one of the Inster City Charter. This speaks directly to Mayor Wimberly's arbitrary decision to expend tax dollars to arcane solutions.
That in addition to...
Thought we had a motion already on the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Are you looking to add that to the agenda when we went through orientation and you could have said that then? What you say now? Okay.
I thought I had to do it in the regular meeting. I'm sorry.
All right. Is there support for that?
Support.
Do we need to do that separately?
We have a motion already on the floor, Mr. Mayor, on the order.
The motion was to accept the agenda as discussed in orientation?
Oh yes, my apologies. She did ask to make an addition to it, to the motion that was out there.
Well, no one gave the motion.
I know, but I, that, I, all I was doing was clarifying. I said she asked to make an addition. So her, whoever made it, I guess would have to accept it. Or amend their motion.
I thought he was just asking for approval of the agenda and at that time you can add additions. Uh, parliamentarian, can you advise?
At this point, the motion would have to be amended because the actual motion was to accept the agenda as presented with the removal of item seven B and nine C. And that was moved in second. So it would definitely have to be an amendment now to the original motion. And the person that made that motion, uh, Mayor Pro Tim would be the one to rescind.
I think I will be the one to rescind. I think it is. I, I, I would have to rescind that.
You would have to rescind your motion.
Okay, so, uh, I guess I would rescind my motion, um, on the agenda. Is, is that what, on the agenda with the items being?
Removed.
Removed.
And amended with?
And amended with Sandra, uh...
The item that Councilmember Wiley wants to add?
Okay, I'm rescind my, uh, I rescind my first, um, motion, well, not motion, but, and then, uh, add.
It was a motion. And Councilmember Washington, would you be in agreement with rescinding that motion?
Rescinding the motion for, for what? For, was this for July the sixth consent agenda? Was that on July the sixth?
No, we're still on approval of the initial agenda.
Oh, okay.
Wimberly, the chair, put out the agenda, um, with removal of two items. Mayor Pro Tim made a motion to accept it with the removal of the items. And I have that Councilmember Washington second it, the motion. This is second the motion. And then Councilmember Wiley wanted to add to the agenda, to the, add an item to the agenda.
Okay, so I would have to rescind my vote to put it back on the agenda for us all to vote? Yay or nay? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, are you in agreement with Mayor Pro Tim rescinding it?
Oh, no.
Okay. So the vote on the table is to approve the agenda as presented with the removal of item seven B and nine C.
Roll call, please, City Clerk.
Councilmember Chisholm. I'm sorry, didn't hear the response.
No.
Councilmember Wiley.
No.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
You have a four to two vote.
All right, motion carries. Moving right on into the agenda. Presentation, discussion from Inster Housing. We have, um, Director Cooper from Inster Housing on the line with us tonight. And also too, I believe Chairman Miller. Um, and then we also have Comcast on the line, as if I'm correct, uh, Erin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Council. Uh, Chairman Miller, are you on the line?
Yes, he is. If we can give him hosting privileges. There you are, Chairman Miller.
Yes, sir, Director, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so I will go ahead and start, uh, for the director. Um, good evening to Mayor, Council and Community. Um, my name is Will Miller. Uh, I am the current chairperson for the Inster Housing Commission. On the call is, um, Director Cooper with us, um, our executive director for the Inster Housing Commission. Also on the call with us is, uh, Maria Holmes. She's the director of Community Impact for Comcast, um, Heartland Region. Well, in conjunction with, uh, New Step, um, Community Development Corporation, um, the Inster Housing Commission is excited to publicly announce, um, our partnership with Comcast to launch a Comcast Live Zone in our community. Uh, I'm going to give you a small quote from a press release they had back in August of two thousand and twenty. Um, the Live Zone is part of a Comcast ongoing commitment to help connect low-income families to the internet so that they can fully participate in educational opportunities and the digital economy. The Live Zone will provide free internet access for our residents and for the community to help us close the digital divide in our community. The Live Zone is part of, uh, Inster Housing's reimagining of how to better utilize the Simmons Center to serve our residents and our community at large. Um, the, the We Rise Initiative, um, is, um, one of the, one of our big, uh, um, program providers over at the, over at the Simmons Center with Mr. Carl Breu and Crystal Linton. Um, they have, and a bunch of awesome volunteers over there. They had a, a, we set up a pop-up school, um, while they, while the pandemic was, was really in its thralls, um, to allow for Inster students, especially going over to Romulus, to, since they weren't able to, um, do so well at home, to come into a environment that will help the students and the teachers, um, better adjust to the situation. So we had a bunch of, uh, teacher, um, retired teachers and some, um, really strong volunteers to help educate the children with the virtual, to, to have tutors available to the children, um, meals available, recesses, to try and keep things as close as possible to what it was they were used to dealing with. So we're, um, we are excited about that. But, um, the, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry. So at this time though, I want to try and give, um, Director Holmes an opportunity to speak, just to give you guys a little bit of more information on how Comcast is utilizing these Live Zones, if she is available to us.
Yes, I am.
Hey, all right.
Yes, I am. Thank you so much for having me. Um, to, uh, Mr. Mayor and all the council, thank you for allowing this opportunity for us to talk about the zones on behalf of Comcast and on behalf of the City of Inster. We're so excited to be able to provide this opportunity, uh, in the community, uh, as Will has mentioned. Um, this is a project that began last year. Our objective is to reach out to communities, um, because we realized with the pandemic that there were so many students that were being left behind because they did not, um, have, uh, the ability to connect to the internet for one reason or another, whether it was they could not afford it or they didn't have access to a computer or many different, um, reasons. And so we wanted to reach out and provide these Lift Zones. Um, and we were delighted when we, um, got the, uh, information from New Step that they were working with, um, the Simmons Center and the Inster Housing Development to provide this opportunity for students. So, um, we're, we're delighted to be a part of it and happy to answer any questions we have. And I just want to, uh, make a, um, an observation that we have worked very well with Mr. Cooper and his team, uh, and getting this Lift Zone set up. And we appreciate the support of Will, um, and his team as well, uh, throughout this process. Um, I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that we were, um, definitely affected by the passing of the leader, Yvette Brock. Um, I, we initially reached out, um, and I spoke with her directly and, um, it saddens us for her passing. But we realize that, um, the work is continuing and we want to support that. So with that, I'd like to yield back my time to Will.
Thank you so much, Director. I do appreciate that. Thank you so much. And, uh, she's such a big part of this community. It's going to be such a tough loss to get used to.
Yeah.
I'd also, I'd like to give Director Cooper an opportunity to inform the community on how we're going to be opening up the Lift Zone to the community here.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, also, uh, want to take time to acknowledge, I believe, a couple members of New Step, uh, maybe on the call, uh, wanted to make sure that if they, if the mayor and the council allows, if they had a few words they just wanted to say about the partnership, um, but they, I believe they're on the call as well. Um, but I, I will say the opening, uh, for the, uh, council, we, we would like for, for all to come by. Um, the opening will be July thirtieth, uh, two PM. Uh, we're having it on July, that's a Friday, I believe, Friday, July thirtieth at two PM. Uh, so we'll have, uh, kind of what I call a soft opening to show the community, um, the Simmons Center, um, show the community just how we're utilizing the Simmons Center, um, and show the community the space, just kind of the purpose of how Live Zone could be utilized. And, um, and we just would like everybody to come see it. Um, the Simmons Center, we do have office space available. Um, so we, we always are looking for partners, uh, to continue some of the things that the Lift Zone can provide, some of the resources that the internet essentials, uh, on behalf of Comcast, some of the resources that, that that provides. Uh, we're always looking for partners. So if the council and, uh, the mayor or anybody knows of, uh, any, any relationships that, uh, you want to become partners, then we're always looking for that. But, um, I definitely wanted to make sure that, uh, New Step, um, were, were, um, on the call and, um, able to say a few words if they like.
It looked like we have Chris Bernie there.
It is Kristen Bernie, that is correct. Hello, I am the interim executive director for New Step Community Development Corporation. Um, we are very excited about this Lift Zone partnership with Inster Housing and Comcast. We're looking forward to all of the, uh, future programs that we'll be able to bring to the community. So we're working very hard with, uh, Mr. Cooper, getting those programs started, working with the We Rise program as well as with our current programs that we already have that are housed out of Newburgh. Um, a lot of you know, um, Yvette Brock, she was our beloved executive director. So we're just trying to continue to follow in the footsteps, then, um, continue down the path, then, uh, continue with our mission and our, uh, vision.
That is awesome. Uh, outstanding, outstanding. Any questions from the councilmatic body or comments? Reverend Williams?
Yeah, I would just like to, um, just say to the chairman and to the director and to the, uh, New Step, uh, you're, you're doing a mighty fine job and I know it's going to be welcome. And I feel that we get our, and anytime that we can start getting the internet services to our children to make them more abreast of what's going on in the community, we're going to shine even better. So I would just like to congratulate you for what you're doing and continue to get worked up as we move forward here in the City of Inster.
Now, is this, uh, with the Lift Zone, will this be like a wifi, free wifi for, for that area? So all of the residents in that area, how, how does that work?
I can address that if you'd like. Um, the wifi that we provide is provided to a room within the building where education is taking place. That is the focus of it, is the education, whether it is youth or adults. So the focus is on the room where the Lift Zone is placed.
Okay.
Yes, it is free wifi.
And we know that that's the Floyd B Simmons Center affectionately known as the Malcolm X Center, um, on Carlisle Street. What's the address over there, guys?
Well, I believe, uh, Mayor, you asked me so fast, it's two nine, oh man, two nine one five Carlisle, I believe.
Yep, that is correct, sir. Two nine one five zero Carlisle Street.
And is it hours of operation? Do you have to register? Can you just walk in? How is that, you know, going to be access to the general public?
Yeah, how we have it, how we're going to have a design, Mayor, it's, it's just going to be access. No, no registration at this time. Uh, you know, we're already in the building, uh, the Inster Housing Commission has a program in the building already. And we have other partners in, in the building. So, um, the, the idea is to ensure that we have kind of working sessions. So right now it's, it's going to be depend on the partner's availability. Uh, but the idea is to have it open throughout the day, you know, Monday through Friday. Um, but as we bring in different partners, the different sessions and things, you know, may change. Just all depends on the schedule. Uh, but it is to the community, I think, to your first point. It's not just for, you know, the residents just in that area. It's, it's for those that need to come in for the community. Uh, because we want to serve our residents first, definitely. Uh, but we, we also be remiss if we don't open this up to the community as we bring in different partners and things. So I think it's more broad, able to serve the community more broadly.
Outstanding. Any other questions, comments in the body? All right, guys, looking good. Continue to work. See the buildings to bring in more programs and I love it.
All right, it's good to see everybody.
All right. Right along. Consent agenda? There are motion to accept the consent agenda?
Go move.
There's support? Moved and properly supported. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
No.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
And Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
I don't believe I took a vote, um, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Going around boards and commissions? Any appointments for boards and commissions?
I know that, uh, while we got housing on the line, we're looking for another housing commissioner. Of course, we know that no one could replace. Yvette Brock and the work that she was doing there, but we want to definitely make sure that we have an equal partner that's like-minded. On your board so you can continue moving forward. Um, you know, you can already see the progress under the leadership of the current. Um. Director, along with, of course, the president and, and the commissioners. Um, and the direction that housing is, is moving in as it relates to quality of life. Services and issues that have been happening in housing and those being corrected quickly and efficiently. I mean, you can see it as evident. If you ride through, um, Lamone Gardens and Denby area now. Um, you can see things are moving forward. So we want to continue that motion. We want to make sure that we have the right person as we're. You know, as we, um, present, um, that person to the body. It is an appointment of the mayor to do that. If anyone is interested in the community, I'm looking forward to, to talking with you. Um, as it relates to being a part of that particular body at the Inster Housing Commission. So. Know that I've talked to several people already. I just want to make sure that we had a right fit. So we talk about our chemistry and people working together. We want to make sure that people are working together. And not against one another for the progression of the city of Inster. So note that, that will be forthcoming. Um, any from the body as I was speaking, do you have, anybody have anything?
I've not received any.
Alright, moving right now. Thank you, City Clerk. On, onto previous business. Madam Clerk?
Yes, so. Item A is consideration and approval. Uh, enterprise fleet management, managing and administering our fleet operations.
Alright, Director Bivins, you want to give us?
He is here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I see him right there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and viewing audience. Um, the night you have before you, I've had the last council meeting, we had a presentation for enterprise. To assume the responsibility of taking over the city's fleet. And, and maintenance of new vehicles. Tonight you have the council request before you. With the additional questions that you asked, I presented that, uh, who's getting the cars and where they're going. I think this is a beautiful program that Mayor Wimby brought to me a year ago. And I began to work with Mr. Eric Dana on this program. And I think we put a reasonable package together for the first round, with more packages to come if this is approved tonight. Which way increase our fleet, improve our fleet, and give us better driving ability. And, uh, increase our safety for our employees too, especially fire police and my guys. With more efficient and improved vehicles than where we're driving now. Like, like Eric told you, some of the vehicles we're driving are 2007s. And they, you know, they're old. They got a hundred and some thousand miles on them. So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'll answer them now.
And just with that, uh, you know, Mr. Bivins, you know, of course, you talk about safety of, uh, you know, the vehicles and personnel, of course. But also to a cost savings to the city. Um, what will be the initial cost savings?
Um, thousands of dollars, thousands because.
What's the thousands of dollars? What, is it thirty-eight thousand, twenty thousand? What's the number?
I, I believe it's in a forty thousand dollar range for the first round of the savings. And then it will increase each round because as we approve the fleet. And make it more efficient, the more money we'll save on maintenance and, um, vehicles, wear and tear. So that's what we're looking at right now. I'm, I think I'm correct. Eric, you can chime in if I'm sure, but I thought the number was forty thousand.
Yeah, we actually conservatively estimated to be about thirty-five, uh, thirty-three to thirty-five thousand, uh, in the first year. Uh, and then in years two and three, we're estimating the city, um. You know, as a running total should, uh, would have saved over about, uh, fifty thousand dollars, uh, at the end of year three. Uh, you know, as a running total.
Alright, any questions, comments from the body?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to.
There's support?
Yes, support.
Any discussions? Hearing unroll call, please.
Councilmember Watley?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Okay. That's a five to one vote.
Motion carries moving right along to new business. Thank you, Mr. Bivins. Thank you, Eric.
So item A. Consideration and approval to amend the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year budget. Um, apparently there was. An error in the millage that was proposed and accepted by. This body at the June twenty-first meeting. So. It actually was nine, point nine eight zero six meals. What was presented to you was point nine six zero nine meals.
Yeah, just point of clarification, it wasn't necessarily an error. Um, if you, the body recalls. Plan Moran, when we were talking about the senior service millage, we had to get that number from the county. These, this was the number that they received from the county. So it's actually more, a little bit more than what we were expecting. So we need to reflect that.
A movement, Tim.
There's support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported. Any other discussion? Hearing unroll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
No.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
You have a four to two vote.
The motion carries. Item B, please.
So, item B is. Consideration and approval of an offer to purchase three bacon parcels in the amount of one thousand dollars. And the purchaser is Lamar Stitt.
What's your pleasure?
A movement, Tim.
There's support?
What?
Discussion? Hearing unroll call, please.
Councilmember Watley? Councilmember Watley?
I'm saying yes. Hello, yes. Hello, hello.
We got it. Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Uh, we have a six zero vote.
Motion carries. Item C is going on to a special. Meeting hopefully for this Thursday after council gives us consent on that. And then item D.
Okay. Okay, item D is a, a special event permit request. From the Pentecostal Temple Church of God and Christ. They would like to hold an outdoor church service on Sunday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. And that service is gonna run from nine AM to four PM at Wheatley Park.
A movement, Tim.
There's support?
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing unroll call, please.
Uh, excuse me, ladies, before you go on, I noticed that some of these packets didn't have things, uh, boxes checked. Is this something we can do on the back end? Cause I'm not against them having their thing. It just. As for things like, will you need electricity? And that box wasn't checked. Or will you have food? That box wasn't checked. And it's in several of them. So if you can just find that out and have them re, um. Do. And it was a couple of them that had boxes empty. So I'm just wondering.
Councilmember Watley, may I?
Please, please.
Chairman?
Yes, please.
Um, for, in the sense of timing, we put it on the agenda, but we are following up. With all those empty boxes and they are coming back complete.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just not approving it if I don't know exactly what it is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. We already had, do we have a motion? Carry discussion?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm? Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
You have a six to one.
Alright, six, 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 oh, so motion carries. Thank you. Item A, please. Item, item A, please, Madam Clerk?
I'm moving with it.
Okay.
So item A is another special event permit. The Inster Jaguar Track Club wants to hold the Earl Jones Run slash Walk. On this Saturday, July twenty-fourth, from seven AM to ten, beginning at Inster Road and South River Road.
What's your pleasure?
So movements, Chair.
There's support?
What?
Discussion? And Earl Jones is, of course, native son of the city of Inster. That's an Olympian that's returning home to host this particular event and will be. On site for it. So I encourage everyone to come out if, of course, it's approved by the council and participate. So, roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
You have a six zero vote.
Motion carries. Alright, move right along, item F?
The next item is a similar event requested from the Inster Jaguar Track Club. To hold the Strive for Greatness Nonprofit Walk for Cancer. And that's on the same day, July twenty-fourth, from seven AM until three PM at Inster Park.
And I think that they're gonna be, and just so for council, know, you know, we're not asking you to approve them to use the Inster Park, but they'll be walking in conjunction. With, um, the track club as it relates to what they're doing. It's pretty much the same thing. But they'll be staging in Inster Park as well. So, um, you know, I just didn't want. You know, they'll be breaking off and then going into the park. It's like, well, this is a whole nother event. Why didn't it come before the council? So. Just wanted to make sure, just for point of clarification.
So we're gonna need a motion for that.
Well, yeah, you should. There's a motion. Is there support?
There's support.
Is there any discussion? Hearing unroll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Howard, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving right to the next item, please.
Okay, so this is another special event permit for the Inster Viking alumni to host an all-class picnic. On Saturday, July thirty-first, from ten AM to eight, at the former Inster High School property.
A movement, Tim.
Support.
Moved and properly supported. Any discussion? Alright, just encouraging all mighty Vikings to come out and support. July the thirty-first, from ten AM to eight PM. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. And you don't have to be a mighty Viking. Of course, we're just, I just put that out there. Um, we asking everybody to come in and participate. Uh, Inster, as you know, is, is a village. And, uh, we all have to support each other. So Bulldogs, Rockets. Zebras, Eagles. Now the new Vikings over at AIA, everybody coming on out and supporting Inster High School Class Reunion. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Putting a lot of effort into it. I'm looking forward to all the things that they'll have there. Uh, before we get off into public participation, Chief Riley, if you could, please. Um, speak to the general public as it relates to, on the Alex Legion piece.
Uh, yes, sir, Mayor and Council and, and, uh, listening public. Uh, the, the investigation involving, uh, has been turned over to the prosecutor's office. And it's currently at the prosecutor's office and, uh, in, in its continue under investigation. And that's all we have at this moment, but it has been sent to the prosecutor's office and the investigation continues.
Alright, I'll bring us to the time of public participation. Uh, we would ask that you state your name for the record. Um, also too, to be respectful of this consumatic body and its processes. And let's move forward in goodwill for the community. Cosmin Chisholm, if you can let them know how to chime in. And we can go from there.
Yes, we are at public participation. If you've joined us by Zoom, uh, video app, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized. If you have joined us by telephone, please use star nine to raise your hand to be recognized. You have one minute to address this body. Please state your name for the record. Once you are addressed. I'm sorry, once you are recognized. And Mr. Mayor, I do see, uh, uh, Clerk Chapman does have her hand raised.
Yes, I have a comment that was emailed to me. From, uh, Barbara Jones, uh, Jones Barber nine one three at gmail dot com. She wanted the comment that. She wanted it brought to the attention that Mayor Wimberly was sued twice at Inster. And for landlord tenant business. And she wondered how is he fit to serve as mayor?
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Make sure that we get back with her with an answer for that. Alright, let's move right along. Latoria Joyce?
And just so you know, to Mr. W. Just, I'm, I'm gonna unmute her, but just so you know, um, I did see Yvette Hardy pressed a button that was the hand clapping feature. It wasn't a raise hand feature. I know sometimes people get the two mixed up. But I just wanted to let you know.
Alright. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mrs. Joyce.
Okay. Good morning. I'm sorry, not good morning. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and to everyone on this, um, line. Um, my name is Latoria Joyce. I am here to let everyone know that tomorrow. At the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex. We will be passing out cleanup kits for everyone, the citizens of Inster that were affected by the flood. We will be there tomorrow afternoon, starting at three o'clock until seven o'clock in the evening. So anybody that needs a cleanup kit, there's, there's, uh. Paper, not paper clips, uh, clothespins inside the bags. They have trash bags. There's gloves. There's laundry detergent. paper, not paper clips, uh, clothespins inside the bags. They have trash bags. There's gloves. There's laundry detergent. There's bleach. There's dishwashing liquid. It's a nice little bucket. So anybody that was affected by the flood, please come up to the rec center tomorrow and, and pick up a, a bucket, a kit. And also they will be giving out from, also from seven, from three to seven, they're giving out food too. So we have box, back, bass, boxes of food that will be, will be passed out along with the cleanup kits. Um, we did it today. We were there at the rec center from, uh, nine o'clock this morning, from ten o'clock this morning to twelve in the afternoon, where we were actually there at two, but it was scheduled to twelve. And we gave out approximately a hundred and fifty kits. So come out tomorrow. Be sure to come out if you were affected by the flood to get one of the kits. We'll, we'll be there waiting for you. And I would like to say thank you to Denise Champagne and her staff for coming out and volunteering along with the, uh, Department of Public Service. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Tori. Keep up the good work. As it relates to, I know that I received a few calls today for folks that are homebound. Are we, um, you know, with our seniors and, uh, folks that, um, you know, can't necessarily drive or, and come and get a kit, but still, you know, are active in their homes. Is it a number for they can call and maybe possibly get a bucket delivered?
Um, yes, they can call our DPS department tomorrow. And, uh, three, one, three, five, six, three, nine, seven, seven, four. And they can give us their number and their address and we will make sure that they will get one.
All right, perfect. All right, moving right along. Uh, Chair recognizes Charles Blackwell.
Hi, yes, this is, uh, Charles Blackwell. I would like to applaud Councilmember Wiley for exposing Mayor Wimberly and Dennis Black at the last city council meeting. Mayor Wimberly was very disrespectful to Councilmember Wiley. And she should have called him Shrek, how Monica Tyers called Ken Kako Shrek back in the day. Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Chair recognizes number two, five, seven, one. Last four is two, five, seven, one. You're off mute.
Uh, yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, Department heads and audience residents. This is Tony Bailey, Inkster Beautification. I'm here to remind that our cleanup for this month will be the last Saturday of this month, July thirty first. We will be up at the rec center at nine AM for those who need gloves and trash bags. All are welcome and needed. That's for businesses, groups, individuals, interfaith groups and black clubs. We like to see you all come out and help. We want to keep Inkster beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Clean, safe and accessible. Clean, safe and accessible. Chair recognized. Is that Will Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm, uh, I have a question about chart, um, garbage pickup here over in our district. It, it seems like the, the trash was being picked up normally for a little while on our Monday, but now it's sort of hit or miss. Like today's Monday and all our trash is out, but they didn't come pick it up. Um, they'll probably come tomorrow, but a couple of weeks ago, they came on Monday. So I'm trying to get a understanding if you guys know what's going on in, in our district, District Four with, with GFL.
Yeah, it's the, it, it's the entire city and it's not just the city of Inkster. I believe it's the entire contract on the contracted service that, uh, GL, GFL is giving right now. But I did have, uh, Mr. Bivins on the docket to speak to that. So I'll actually yield some time right now to him to be able to speak to that for the general population. Mr. Bivins?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council and citizens. Um, to the point that Mr. Mayor just made, um, GFL is struggling right now in all cities far as picking up trash, bulk, recycling and compost. We have a meeting scheduled with them this Wednesday at ten o'clock in the Tiffa Room, uh, the administration to discuss these issues and just to bring the residents up to date. Since Memorial Day, which was May thirty first, GFL has been behind in the city of Inkster. So it's almost been two months. So we will have a serious, detailed conversation with them on Wednesday at ten AM in the Tiffa Room to address the concerns of our residents. I have voiced our concerns and emails. I have gotten emails from them telling me that they're behind. Um, unfortunately, they didn't complete their task today, which is unacceptable to the city of Inkster, which is unacceptable to all people who have contracts with GFL right now. But I do talk to fellow DPS directors. So like you said, we are on top of it. We're aware. And I, I don't like the idea of our citizens having to look at debris in front of their house past their normal trash day. So I will have, like I said, we will be addressing these concerns with, uh, GFL on Wednesday at ten AM. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Bivins, just for the, again, for the general population, what's the, um, what does the contract state about trash being picked up in a timely manner?
Um, on your trash day, your trash is supposed to be picked up, which means four trucks come down your street, which is regular trash, bulk pickup, compost and recycling. If they fail to meet that obligation, they have like a twenty-four hour to forty-eight hour window to come back and address that once the city has notified them. And they have failed to, uh, comply with that in the contract. So the contract states that we can find them up to two hundred dollars, uh, a day. So we will be addressing that issue with them on Wednesday because.
Per household that they missed, Mr. Bivins, let's be clear with that.
Oh, per household that we can find them. So we will be addressing that with them on Wednesday. Um, and as we know, there are some streets they haven't picked up in two or three weeks at a time that they've missed. And they're aware of it too. So we will be addressing that issue come Wednesday.
Yeah. And when we say the administration attorney will be included in that conversation as well. Just letting you know, as a general population, uh, we are definitely on it. I'm also too, just for, um, just for public information, and we're working right now with Inkster Housing. Um, Director, uh, Director Cooper and I, we've been talking about, you know, of course collaborating on different things within the community. Um, as he's coming to the position over in housing, he's noted just a number of things that are being done that could be streamlined and could work in conjunction with the city. And the number one is trash. I get a lot of calls about trash in housing, which, uh, the housing authority is separate from the city. Um, even though the city, of course, you know, we appoint, uh, housing commissioners and then of course they appoint the director. However, however, they're their own authority and the trash is separate from the city. So you, you have like two to three different trash contractors just picking up trash in housing. And then we have the one for the city. So we're looking to collaborate together to see if we can have just one trash hauler for the entire city. That way we can hold, um, them accountable for taking care of all of our citizens at one time. All right, thank you, Mr. Bivins. Appreciate that. Um, Chair Miller, I hope that answered your question.
Uh, one more thing, sir. And we ask the people to be a little patient with us as we're going around picking up the flood stuff. You know, DPS is doing that along with GFL. So we just ask you to be patient, put it out there, but give us the opportunity to come back, pick it up, because there's a lot out there. And we know we got hit again this past weekend. So we know it's more debris out there. We just ask you to please be patient. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Bivins, just let me just make sure too, we, we, we talk about DPW doing a lot of different things. I mean, you're responsible for, you know, grass cutting, water main breaks and things of that nature. How many people do you have on staff doing all this stuff? And then now you're talking about adding trash collection on to them. How many people do you have on staff doing all that?
Eight.
Eight, eight people?
Yes, sir.
So if you have a water main break at the same time that you're trying to cut grass, you have what, four to five people going to a water main break?
No, I shut the grass cutting down because joining my staff has to go to a water main break. So anytime I have something of that nature, I shut up, I have to shut even the trash down because I have to have at least four to five, like you said, four to five guys on there. And sometime, and the same token, we might get a flooded street come in or a flooded basement come in at the same time. So we, we're juggling the schedule right now. Uh, I did, I did try to give my guys the day off this past Sunday, but they came in to pick up some trash. So we've been basically working seven days a week, trying to keep up.
And that's right. I mean, they, they live in the community, you know, we see all, see the debris and the trash all throughout. So we want to do what we can to, to help. So we're gonna try to coordinate with you. We, yeah, I can hear you, sir. I'm talking. I, I get right to you. Hold on one second. Um, we will try to coordinate with you, uh, Mr. Bivins, as it relates to a group of volunteers, because I know that, um, some young men, uh, within the community that want to be able to, to help and kind of volunteer to get some of that debris off the streets with you. So maybe it's, uh, on the cleanup day, which, uh, the beautification committee is working on. Maybe we'll do that this Saturday.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Go ahead, uh, Councilman Williams.
I just wanted to add to that, when he's talking to, uh, G, um, the, uh, garbage people, uh, they're not only now missing streets, they're coming down the street, emptying every other garbage, garbage can and keep going.
Yep. Yeah, I saw that. I mean, just we talked about Monday's route. I'm on Monday's route and they, they came and they got all of the recyclable cans on one side of the street.
My knowledge too. They, they.
Yeah.
Missing some people houses, picking up.
Yep. I think that's because they're trying, you know, that they, you know, they're, they're short because of, you know, what's happening in the nation as it relates to unemployment, especially, um, here in the state of Michigan, where the unemployment is still, you know, carrying on and, you know, people are just not coming to work. So it's a manpower shortage. So what's happening in everything that, that is going on and fast food and, you know, so, so we're just trying to figure out what the medium is, because we don't want to, again, um, you know, have our citizens suffer. So we're gonna do our best to make sure we get on top of that. All right, let's continue on. Octavia Smith?
Hi, good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, um, public. Um, first of all, I'm glad to hear some of the things that I'm hearing. But I do bring you greetings from the Inkster Task Force, where we are having our farmer's market every Wednesday from four to seven PM. We are still accepting vendors and we would love to see our mayor, council and our residents stopping by and supporting. That's one. And I'm skipping right along to the Inkster Chamber of Commerce. As you all may know, that this is the time of the year when we do our calendar ads. So, um, we have sent out information to everyone and we will have some more postings, um, to, so everyone can be a participant in our twenty twenty-two calendar. So those, and the last item is Western Wayne Family Health Center. We are still doing COVID testing. We are still doing COVID vaccinations, but they are now by appointment because it's not as rapid. So please call three, one, three, five, six, one, five, one, zero, zero to, um, sign up or register. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I gotta say that, uh, I've, I've been to the farmer's market myself of, on a few occasions and Mrs. Blandon's cookies are off the chain. So if you guys those are good desserts, go over there on Wednesdays and, and Mrs. Blandon has some delightful desserts over there. All right, moving right along, Rebecca Daniels.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Rebecca Daniel. Uh, I, um, have a question with regard to the, uh, the, uh, conversation on the NSP. And that is, do, do the council need the logistic that we're speaking about in order to approve the program? Or, I mean, does that have to all go together? Or can you approve the program considering, specifically considering what it is, you know, it's to stabilize the community? We know we need it. Um, do we have to have those other things in order to opt into the program? And, and it's so time sensitive.
Yeah, I think that's why we're having a special meeting on, uh, hopefully this Thursday, um, to be able to allow the attorney to digest the information as it relates to the RFQ that was put out back in twenty eighteen to be able to answer those questions that you're saying, because technically, if, you know, we're talking about three years and, you know, you had approval date from twenty eighteen, March twenty eighteen to March twenty twenty-one, however, you know, that would be the three years. So for him to look at it and all of the vendors that are in there currently, you know, number one, have they, you know, you know, been a good steward of what was given to them already? Um, do they owe the city any, you know, back taxes? Um, or any outstanding certificate of occupancies? Where are they in those processes? Did they, you know, do everything that they said, said that they were gonna do as it relates to putting the, the, the properties, uh, back in good standing with the citizens, I mean, the, the city? And then being able to put homeowners in them or get permission from the city to rent those properties? So I think that.
Yes, yes.
A lot of information that we, we want to make sure that we put together to put before the body, for the body then can turn, could, could, uh, you know, to make those decisions. And then too, if it's something that's in the program that's not working for the NSP developers along with, as you heard from a couple of our council members today as it relates to our employees, um, you know, that's not working, then we can make those decisions and make those changes at that time to be able to hear from the general public and, and then be able to take some action. And, and we will be in time. Uh, because the time is not until this Friday.
I, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Um, let me ask it differently, because I understand everything that you said and I agree with everything that you're saying. I understand it. So let me ask it another way. With what you just said, and understanding that those things, uh, we, we're gonna say must be done, need to be done, should be done. Do those things have to be done in order to opt into the program? Or can we opt in and deal with it? Because we already know what needs to be done. So can we opt in to the program and then make sure that we do what we need to do to make sure that this program goes the way it's supposed, supposed to go, intended to go? Or do we, do those things have to already be in place to say, yes, we opt in?
Yeah.
Am I making more sense?
Yeah, I mean, well, you, you made sense on the first go around and I'm just gonna say it differently from the way I just, way I just said it.
It sounds, it sounds like.
Yes. Yeah, I'm just gonna make it plain. Yes. Yes. So that's why we're having a special meeting to do.
So you do, okay. Got it. Thank you. That was it.
You're welcome, ma'am. Uh, Sergeant Wall?
You took me, uh, by surprise, Mayor. I apologize. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. Uh, I was writing notes. Um, just a few things I wanted to bring up. Um, I wanted to piggyback off of, uh, Ms. Joyce's and Mr. Bivins' topics, um, with regards to the cleanup kits. Uh, Ms. Joyce can forward any list to us for delivery of those kits if need be. We'll be happy to do that. Uh, we are kind of limited right now with the move. Um, so we're trying to jump in wherever we can. Um, with regards to the trash pickup, we have relaxed enforcement on the issue of garbage cans at the curb. We've been getting complaints about those issues and we just wanted to make it clear that with the sporadic pickup, um, that's actually an unenforcement. Um, we can't enforce it, um, in one, one specific location and not in another. So it's fair across the board. We've relaxed that because of, I guess, the, the sporadic pickup. Um, and the last thing I wanted to announce is that our department is gearing up for our annual Halloween decorating contest throughout the community. So details for that will be forthcoming. Uh, it was a, we had a great response last year and, um, wonderful participants and we hope to have it bigger and better this year. And, um, we'll have those details out. Keep an eye on our Facebook page. And, um, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
All right, thank you so very much. And Yvette Hardy?
Good evening, Mayor, Council and all the citizens of Inkster. To the city clerk, she, um, asked for the council to vote on someone purchasing three lots, but she never, um, stated where these lots were located. I was just used to the previous clerk, because she would also give us the location. So can you just please give me the location?
Okay.
Um, it's.
Yeah, we'll make sure that you get to those. We'll make sure you get those, Ms. Hardy.
Okay.
They're on Allen Street, Allen and Cherry.
Okay, okay.
Allen and Cherry, the two vacant, actually three vacant lots, they're really small.
Allen, Allen.
And Cherry, right in that, right in that curb, right there, back by the dead end.
Okay, thank you.
Taking care of that property for some, some period of time, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. All right, moving into city clerk, you have anything for us?
I do not.
All right, city treasurer, you have anything for us?
Uh, yes, there may have been some people who have not received, um, their tax bill yet, um, and they are on the way, so. Um, if you are one of those people, it went out today, and you will get an insert inside of the tax bill explaining why you're just getting it.
All right. Anything else, sir? All right, moving right in, Mayor and Council Communications, Councilman Shaw, you wanna start?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of things, uh, I just want to continue to encourage, uh, residents to, uh, invest in small cameras. Because they do help us, uh, you know, stay safe, and and it can definitely help in some of these investigations that we have within the community, so I want to encourage all of our members. Uh, to invest in a small camera, so that it can help keep you safe. And also want to thank the mayor's administration, the mayor and and administration, uh, D P S, Ms. Joyce, Mr. Mr. Jerome Bivins, and also. Uh, Sergeant Wall for several items that I had, and they were, they were, um, they were on top of them, and I and I want to say thank you. To the administration and, uh, those directors. Uh, for assisting me in those endeavors, and I did, Mr. Bivins, I I sent you out some stuff, uh, earlier today, so hopefully. Uh, you 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 got some of those pictures, and, um, I I don't, I do want to thank, uh, Sergeant Wall, uh, special thanks to Sergeant Wall for. Removing that burnt out vehicle on Middle Belt, uh, you you, I mean, she was on top of it the very next day, and I really appreciate that, really appreciate that. Um, and also police patrol on Glenwood Street and North, Northwood, Northwood Street. And also I have, uh. To Mr. Bivins, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, John Daley and North River Park. Uh, this, I don't know if you wanna be repairing that street, or what's going on with that, into that street there.
I will get your update on that.
Okay, and, uh. Uh, something just there.
Okay.
Question for Councilman Shaw.
That, that's all I, yes, sir.
What you said, did you say John Daley, North River Park, or is it Avondale, where those cones are?
Yeah, yeah, Avondale, thank you, I wrote down John Daley, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
I knew exactly what he was talking about, so.
Yeah, 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 I wrote it down, John Daley, I was, uh, on John Daley, and I, yes, sir, so.
Yeah, we got it.
Avondale and North River Park there.
Hmm, yeah.
And, um, you know, when we dealing with the trash issue, I mean, it's a, it's a real, uh, uh, concern within our community, because. You know, we have residents that's out there, uh, have to deal with that trash, I mean, I've been on several streets. Witnessing some of the trash that has not been picked up for two weeks, so, I mean, when we dealing with this contract, I mean, when we dealing with these, with with G F L. Uh, and their contract, uh, we we, I mean, you know, we really have to, you know, we really have to have some strong, uh, conversation with them. Uh, especially on, you know, reimbursing us, because, you know, we're paying, you know, I think the treasurer may mention the taxes went out, I got my taxes. And we we're paying on that contract, on that rubbish, so, you know. Hopefully I can be able to to chime in with you on that, Mr. Chair, a- and that's all, that's all I have.
Yeah, for 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 certain, you're more, you're more than welcome to, we'll send the information out to you. Um, you know, and again, we we just want to make sure that it's, it's just not an Easter problem, this is a problem that's happening. Uh, with G F L contractors all around this area, so it's unfortunate, but it's really just manpower, and we know. That, you know, in the world that we live in, then, you know, right now, you know, manpower is scarce, you know, unfortunately. Um, so we're trying to do our best, but at the same time, we have to take care of our people.
Yes, and I and I, and I appreciate that, um, but, you know, the people are paying for it, we all are paying, because we are neighbors.
That's right.
All are paying for it, and, you know, we can't use that same situation when it comes down, when our tax bill comes out. We can't say, well, you know, I I'm working part-time, or, you know, I don't have the funds or whatnot to pay my tax bill, you know, because people will be on on top of your head. If you, if you missing your tax, uh, 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 bills, so, you know, I mean. You know, I'm I'm not gonna go too far into it, but, you know, I I I would ju- definitely try to chime in with you on Wednesday.
As the kids say, we gonna make it make sense, so, uh, it would, believe me, all right, uh, Councilman Wally.
Uh, yes, I'm, I would like to, um. I mean, are you hearing me? I know I've been having problems, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to echo the garbage I've had compost for two and a half weeks setting out. And, um, this two hundred dollars per person, per incident, per person. Is what they owe us if they don't do what they're supposed to do, that's what the contract states.
Yes, ma'am. And we, and know that we're we're, we've been engaging with them from day one, it hasn't been just, we just started yesterday, this has been ongoing for about a month now. As it relates to the communications that the director, um, Director Bivins has had with them, um, as it relates to the contract itself, noting, uh, the contract. So we're looking at, you know, as it relates to, you know, paying, um, not paying, you know, that particular amount and what it is, so. We will be, you know, and that's why we're having a meeting with attorneys, um, along with, uh, you know, our treasurer, to be able to figure out what that number is, as it relates to. Uh, whether or not we paying the bill or reimbursement for the bill.
Okay, uh, second thing I have is, um, in reference to the ordinance department, moving back to the building department. How does that impact their ability to write tickets? Which they had the right, the ability to do when they were working out of the police department.
Yeah, I think it's actually, and I was gonna speak to that on my, um, you know, my comments, but I'll speak to it now, um, the code enforcement office, uh, office. Officers as it relates to, um, Sergeant Wall and Officer Vasquez and Officer Paisley. Have been moved back over to the building department where they were originally at, with code enforcement under the supervision. In direction of the building department, the chief building official, Don, uh, Jones, um, we do have two other officers that are still out. Um, with the police department, and, um, there, Officer Fred, and I forget the other officer's name, but he's our dog impound. Um, officer, they're still doing code enforcement as well, they're still under, um, the umbrella of the police department. Now, we do have, um, an opinion out, because from my understanding, the reason why code enforcement was moved over to P D. Was to fall under the umbrella for they could be, uh, officers to be able to use clemets and, um, use other mechanisms to write tickets. Uh, however, code enforcement in in the, in the community should be a quasi, uh, a quasi-fit, if you will, what we're trying to engage where. They get out into the community, talking with our people, educating our people, before we actually go to just writing tickets. So what we're trying to do now is educate the community on what they should be doing, uh, working with Officer Wall, that she's still, um, writing, you know, writing letters and things of that nature within the community. Uh, within the office, but actually putting the other officers out in the community to actually work, and I said that they weren't working before. But just to be able to have a little bit more guidance, and a little bit more interaction with the, um, with 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 our citizens, as it relates to code enforcement, so. We don't know the outcome as of yet, um, when we talk about writing tickets, that's not, that shouldn't be the first thing that we think about with code enforcement. Um, however, um, you know, we do have the police, that if we need to write tickets, however, we do have support to be able to do that, so. Um, we'll see what happens, but I think that it's gonna be a really good fit.
Okay, well, that was one of my concerns, as when you're using utilizing the police, which is already depleted. To do things of that nature, it sort of, uh, ties them up when they don't have to be, but that's just my opinion. Okay, for my third thing, I attempted to make a motion that the city of, that the Inkster City Council. Exercise their mayor oil veto that's granted to them under section point one of the city charter. And I can read that to those who are unfamiliar with that portion. This speaks directly to Mayor Wimberly's arbitrary decision to expend tax dollars to Arcane Solution, Solutions. Whereas Mayor Wimberly has failed to produce the contract with Arcane Solutions. Or enumerate any of the duties they have performed for the city, warrant an expenditure of forty nine, of four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Which is a violation of the purchasing policy, after repeated requests. And has said that the contract was never presented, and also the contract was never presented to the city council for approval, as Mayor Wimberly has openly. Admitted that the monies were to repay Dennis Black, a former independent contractor, which has never had a contract with the city as well. Mayor Wimberly secreted the money by first issuing a check to Dennis Black, voiding it. And reissuing it to Arcane Solutions, this company is directly associated, is not directly, is directly associated with Dennis Black. But he has no ownership, his name isn't on this company anywhere. Furthermore, Mayor Wimberly has, was fully cognizant of the fact. That the Inkster City Council was not in favor of this expenditure, as is evidenced by the email remitted September of twenty twenty. In which Mayor Wimberly acknowledged that the matter should not have been presented to council, and he would handle it personally. Now, the purchasing qua- policy clearly states, section B, subsection A, page three, standards for procurement. Contracts or purchases shall not be artificially divided to circumvent purchasing procedures in this policy. In short, for one to knowingly reduce the dollar amount of a payment to circumvent council approval is a violation. Per the city of Inkster's purchasing policy, section B, section A, section A. Failure to follow the policy, the city of Inkster shall not be responsible for the cost of goods and services ordered or purchased. By any city official or employee that is not obtained in accordance with this policy. Contracts negotiated outside of this policy will be considered invalid and non-binding. The Inkster City Council as fiduciaries of city funds must send a clear message that no person is above the rules established by this charter, including the mayor. We must veto this decision and observe and respond to past and future infractions of this nature. We are the checks and balances, and have been elected to hold ourselves, as well as others, to account. Failure to do so makes us complicit in these decisions and violations. So, um, as it did not pass tonight, I just want to say to the citizens of Inkster, it seems like we're not doing what we're supposed to do. So if I can't, um, encourage the council to handle their fiduciary responsibilities. Maybe you can write in and encourage them to do so, that's all I.
All right, thank you, uh, David Jones, can you, Attorney Jones, for the city of Inkster, can you speak to that for me, please, for the. For this body and what has been done as it relates to that, for the general public, as an attorney for the city?
Yeah, there, Dennis Black performed services on behalf of the city as an interim special projects manager. Um, when he was unable, for personal reasons, to be employed to take the position full-time. He did work several months without getting paid, and as Member Wiley indicated, you did submit payment for work that had been performed. For Dennis Black, um, about three months worth of of past due that he had not received, and the council declined to pay Mr. Black. Um, I don't think there was any question that Dennis Black was working in the city of Inkster, and the fact that council denied. His request for payment for services that had already been rendered, didn't make the matter go away, uh, I don't recall what month you requested council to. Agreed to pay that, but they declined, it was almost nine thousand dollars. Uh, in December of two thousand and twenty, apparently, Mr. Black hired an attorney and sent you a letter. Indicating that they were planning to sue for what past wages not received, and when you, when a person works for and not receive compensation for at least a minimum wage. You know, they could get liquidated damages, triple damages, uh, and of course, any legal fees that were incurred. You had conversations with Dennis Black, and he understood that count, because council had denied his request for payment. The only way he was gonna get paid was to file a lawsuit, he did not file a lawsuit, instead, he agreed to compromise the amount that he was owed. For an amount under five thousand dollars, which was in your authority as mayor to to pay. Um, saving at least four thousand dollars on the amount he was owed, and any legal fees had he retained council and actually filed a lawsuit. Um, just because he wasn't paid and council denied it, didn't mean he was gonna go away, and he didn't go away, he in fact hired council, so. In compromising the amount he was owed, you actually saved the city several thousand dollars.
Okay, I need to speak to that, please.
On top of, and on top of that, and on top of that, let me just say this, that, uh, Charday Fleming was the special projects manager. Over a number of accounts for community development block grants. And our federal, uh, federal monies for cops grants and for our fire program grants, and at that time, when she left out. She left out, and we had deadlines of things that were due, that weren't done, that Mr. Black. Uh, did for us, that saved us at least a million dollars on the record. I paid him under the special projects manager position, um, in the interim of, because. Uh, he was doing the work, I made him the interim projects manager, but because he couldn't, for personal reasons, get, take the job on. Um, you know, I knew I had to bring it to council, because I couldn't hire him, so that, that's what happened in this instance, not anything nefarious, or. You know, trying to circumvent, um, the authority of council, and then, you know, you're saying that it's, you know, I said that I would personally take care of it, maybe I used the wrong words, I mean. As the mayor, I said that, you know, I would take care of it, so that's what I did, I'm not trying to, um, dodge if I did something wrong. Put it out there, let's figure it out, but, you know, it's like. What whatever you want to have happen here, I want to make it happen, you know, because I want to move on, move forward, I want to move this community forward.
I would like to move forward too, on this issue, because nothing was ever given to us as far as Mr. Black. Threatening to sue us for money he felt he was owed, in fact, I believe that several council members. Pushed back on the fact that he didn't do those things you said he did, so.
Yeah, I said he did, the former treasurer said that he did it, and it's all in writing, we.
Well, whatever you gave us in writing, we pushed back on and giving and gave you incidents, so I'm not gonna argue with you about it, I'm saying that. Him suing us should have been brought to us, so the attorney, uh, anytime something of that nature happens. He's supposed to do it, I mean, the charter clearly states, the attorney shall, um, call to attention of the council. All manners of law and changes or developments therein affecting the city. So this was affecting us, and you still thought it wasn't a good idea to bring it to us, this is another point. This is another point of your lack of transparency in dealing with the city council, I have said this.
And the attorney worked for all of us, not just.
Please speak, would you, would you?
Belabor, you're belaboring this.
No, I'm not, I'm, this is a new point, because he said that you paid him because he was gonna sue us, now, if he was gonna sue us.
For all of us, so you're saying about me.
Kinda, that's kinda iffy right about now, but anyway, that's just my opinion once again, but, um. This is something that council should be made aware of, it should have been, and I think that as person who said. Who made all the decisions to pay Dennis Black, the money should come out of your pocket, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. All right, moving right along, Councilman Chisholm.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, I'm, I am going to push back on what Attorney Jones has stated. I did send a rebuttal email in response to what he drafted and sent out to us today, um, just a side note. The mayor does not have the authority to enter into a contract on behalf of the city without city council approval. Dennis Black was not an employee, and we got that in writing, so therefore he was an independent. Dennis Black was not an employee, and we got that in writing, so therefore he was an independent contractor. And for any funds to be expended to him, it has to come before council with a contract. The mayor can pay a small bill under five K. The mayor cannot hire someone as an independent contractor and let, and under these circumstances, he was appointed, he was not actually formally hired as an employee, nor he can he pay them without city council approval. The letter that came out in December twenty twenty, even though this was a pressing matter that we had been talking about, we never got the letter and never knew he was even gonna seek legal action against the City of Inkster. It was never in a litigation report. It never came up in closed session. It never came up anywhere. It's July twenty twenty-one, and we just saw that letter for the first time today to solidify the reason that Dennis Black was paid out. Unfortunately, I cannot agree with what has happened because those are the rules. We have the rules set in place where we could do stuff. Now, it didn't get brought to us before at a council meeting. It got sent to us an email where we cannot take a formal vote, and we pushed back for clarity reasons. So I do echo the same sentiments as my colleague, Councilwoman Wiley, and those because we all, we have to vote to spend anything. When you circumvent the, the, well, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna even say circumvent. Said that he agreed and compromised to take four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. The optics on that are very skeptical because as it was stated, you said you were the mayor, the charter gives you that right. It's, it's actually the purchase policy that gives you that right to spend that, but it's with a vendor that we have already agreed upon a contract for. When you stated that it was for Dennis Black and we paid arcane solutions, the request has come through multiple times to see the contract. I'm under the impression it doesn't exist because the contract has yet to be presented to us. And then five hours and one minute before tonight's meeting, Attorney Jones sends us an email with all of this information. Um, I legitimize in Dennis Black and things of that nature. And also with some of those grants, yes, of course, he, they did come under, uh, his reign, if you will, while he was in that position. But I, I find that hard to believe that half the department heads that said they worked on these grants and stuff like that, he was taking credit for the grants that they worked on. Now, I get it that they worked on together, but I, I, it, it's just very difficult for me to accept. I'm gonna go past that one and move on to my next thing. My question about the payroll system and the application, what's going on with that? I've, I, I have reached out in, in your executive assistant, Mr. Allison, not his reached back out to me and, and they're in an effort of trying to get me logged in, but I haven't been able to log in or create any accounts or anything since, um, it's inception, since we transferred over. I don't know if one, I can't see my pay stub. I can only see what's being directed positively. So I don't know who's, if, if, who's signing the checks. I don't know if, I, I just don't know anything. And I don't know if the rest of my colleagues are having the same issue. They've been able to log in and, and, and do anything with their pay stubs and see anything or not, or what's going on.
Yeah, Safe has his hand raised. Safe, you wanna speak to that?
Yes, uh, sorry, I'm outside walking. Uh, Councilman Chisholm, I reached out to Michael from DM Peral regarding your matter. And, uh, he responded back earlier today, and he advised that he wants me to confirm your personal information that you have. So you and I will have a, a, a conversation, uh, and will confirm the date of birth, and also your last four, uh, your last four digits of your social security number, and then we can go from there because maybe that information could be wrong, so that why it's showing you as not an, an, an existing current member. I can log in and I can view my current stub, and I go, I know a few other people can do that, but maybe there's some kind of, um, glitch where some of your information is wrong. Maybe your last name is spelled wrong, or maybe your first name is spelled wrong. So I'll confirm with you tomorrow morning. We'll have a conversation, you and I.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. My next one is, I, I was told a few weeks ago when I had reached out about the insurance policies, and I was told that the RFQs and whatnot were gonna be sent out since they expire August first. Um, I, I, I kinda was under the impression that we might be talking about something with that in these coming weeks. Is, what's the status on the?
Yeah, well, let me just say this from talking to both of them, because I know Matt Carter, I mean, me and Matt, actually Matt and I, we, we, we were talking right when I got elected as it relates to all that information. Um, and because it's so late in the season, we still are gonna try to, to do something, but we do have long that's our, you guys actually in twenty seventeen, actually twenty eighteen, you just had hired him on. So, uh, long insurance that's trying to do the same thing that, you know, you're talking about, um, going out for a RFP and RFQ, we want to give him a chance to respond as well. So I will be working with, uh, Convince A Mendisa, Mendisa, um, has given us some parameters as it relates to RFQ to actually put out there. But because of that timeline and be, and because of the shortness of the notice, I mean, we really need to start this like August to get to August, you know, versus, you know, three months ago to get to now. So, you know, we can still possess some to this body because I know that it is some cost savings, but at the same time, we want to give Mr. Long a chance to be able to respond as well. So I can have him on this agenda to be able to speak to that next week. I mean, uh, next two weeks, we can make sure that we, we have that on the agenda.
Okay, and then, um, next, I was just wondering, uh, Councilwoman Wiley actually had asked us earlier in regards to ordinance. I was just curious, what are the pros and cons of moving them back to City Hall? Um, you know, I was under the impression when they were moved to the police department, it was so they could have access to different systems and things of that nature, but of course, bringing them back, and I heard what you said earlier, where we still have a couple other people over there. But I think only one of those persons is particularly involved with ordinance, even though the animal control officer is there. I don't believe he's trained in the ordinance department or field. So I was just wondering, what are the pros? Huh?
He is. He's an ordinance officer as well.
For the animal, animal control officers, ordinance and animal control?
For sure. It's always been that way.
So what are the pros and cons of moving them back to City Hall?
Well, I mean, the pros is, is it relates to the organization being able to have them work with the chief building official on the ordinances themselves and being able to, you know, manage that appropriately across the board. You know, as it relates to the cons, you know, I can't see, you know, in, any cons just right off, you know, like, because we're start, we're just starting it under, you know, under my regime, you know, if that's the case. You know, so, you know, it, 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 as it relates to the organization itself and the administrating officer, you know, I, you know, talking to you about it at the same time, you know, I'm just trying to move the organization forward to, to the best of my ability, seeing what's said, you know, what's been lacking or where, where the gaps are. And there was a gap in between the building department, working with the code enforcement officers. So code enforcement, you know, basically have been over with the police, and as you go back to talking about tickets and writing tickets and writing tickets, I mean, you know, that we're talking about our citizens, you know, and I get, you know, writing tickets, however, we need to do some education. We need to do community engagement. So that's what we're trying to take that approach. So we'll see if it works. If it doesn't work, then, you know, we'll, we'll try another approach. But right now, I think this is the best solution for the organization.
Okay, so, and, and I want to question that because you said there was a gap in communication. So the two departments, departments just refused to talk to each other? Or there was no resolution else on the table that you could resolve a communication gap?
Well, you, you know, again, you know, councilman, you know, it's the executive body of government, the legislative body of government. So on the executive side of government, which I'm in charge of, I saw that it needed to be a change. So I'm, I made that decision as an executive of the organization, and I'm gonna see how it works. So it's not that, you know, it, it's nothing else about it, you know, really, to be honest, you know, and again, um, for me, you know, sitting in this seat and looking at, you know, what has been happening in the organization, like I said to you, it was just, you know, in between the previous building department to the new building department, and the, you know, the code enforcement being, you know, under the chief of police, it was just a lot going on. So, you know, code enforcement should be working on, you know, our ordinances, that it look at our city, making our city clean. And, you know, working hand to hand with the police to keep it safe, but, you know, their job is to make it, you know, help to educate our people to keep it clean.
With all due respect, I feel like you just rambled and talked the circles around it, so I'm just ask, ask one simple question. Was there a problem with ordinance being at the police department?
No, but I'm not rambling on anything, Councilman. I was just telling you that I'm the executive, and I'm just telling you straight, it was my prerogative, so I did it. Based off of what I believe the organization needs. So I was trying to be nice when I just said it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you have the floor.
Yeah, all right. Councilwoman Washington?
Yes, um, I would like to, um, request more police presence on Gertrude and also Glenwood. They've been having issues with noise, uh, drug activity and just multiple of different, um, issues along with, uh, speeding as well. Um, also, I wanted to ask about that, uh, the, the middle belt, e, the east man on middle belt, it's, the grass is entirely very high. I'm not sure if that's Wayne Colony or us that actually deals with that. But, um, I want to see about how we would be able to get that cut because it's, uh, eyesore to one of the main roads in my district. Um, and then also, of course, to echo the same sentiments of my colleagues, I've been also receiving a lot of issues, a lot of calls with issues of GFL not picking up the yard waste as well, but, um, that's all I have for tonight.
All right, we're definitely gonna get on top of that. Let me just talk, uh, to the grass cutting, um, you know, a, as we were talking about earlier, Mr. Bivins, you know, going from like four divisions, he had a grass cutting division, the Parks and Rec Division, the Water Division. Everybody now is under the Water Division, and he went from in two thousand and twelve, where he had sixty-five employees to, uh, eight today. Um, so he's in charge of cutting grass and, 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 and seeing the, the different contractors that we have in cutting grass. But this is our responsibility on that end for us to cut the grass. So we're looking for, if you guys know anybody that looks, that need a job, that want to work, is gonna come to work, we're looking for people to hire a DPW to help us, you know, with, you know, cutting grass. So you guys approved us to have six more employees, um, throughout, you know, the first budget process that I was involved in to now the second one. So we have six more openings, if you will, to be able to hire people, but it's just hard to get folks in and get them hired, you know? So we're working to do that. Yes, sir.
Is, is the court helping with their community program? Can they assist us as well?
Yeah, we, we've asked them, but that was one of the things that they took out of the program. They don't do any grass cutting and weed whacking and things of that nature because of liability with the equipment and, and the community service workers. So we're looking to see if we can revamp that a little bit with the chief judge, and that'll be a discussion that we'll be having that'll be ongoing because that is a, 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 a much needed service. However, Mr. Bivins is working, working right now, looking at, you know, I think it's like twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand that we have for our, uh, grass cutters for the season. We're looking to possibly bring something to this body to say, okay, we need to possibly bid this out to one of our, you know, put it out for our P, RFQ to bring, you know, a, a company in to get that done because the grass is very high along a middle building throughout the community itself just because of the rain, number one. And this has been, I, I've never in my lifetime, uh, seen anything like it as it relates to rain, you know, in July and the weather itself. So it's like April right now, you know, in May, you know? So hopefully, we can get caught up here very, very soon with the help of in, uh, Mr. Bivins and his direction, working with, you know, the contractors that we have, and then DPW workers. Believe me, they're extended, like you heard Mr. Bivins say that they're working, uh, seven days a week. They are. They're out picking up, they're, they're becoming garbage people now, you know? Just to keep up with everything that's happening in the community. Do all the grunt work and dirty work for us, so we gotta get out now as a community as much as we can to help. You know, we gotta bring out our lime wars, whatever we need to do. That's what I'm willing to do. So we're gonna start a brigade, a brigade, a lime war brigade. You know, if that's the case. Councilman Shaw, me and you, we'll be riding on those going down Middle Belt, working with, uh, Mr. Bivins, because I know you'll get out there and work, but that's what we're looking to do. So I'm sorry about that to the general public, but we definitely are working because we definitely want to make, keep Inkster clean and safe and, and accessible. You hear me keep saying that a lot, but anyway. All right, Councilman Williams.
Councilman Williams, you got anything for us?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, sir.
Okay. I, I don't like the fact, uh, that we have low-income people in the area who entitled us to, uh, to tax credit, you know, to, to live, and, and I don't like the way that we are, uh, are handling that situation. I don't like how we are, we are trying to get the information to the people who's having these hardships. And, you know, they entitled to a tax break. Okay? And I don't know why, I, I understand, I, I understand the people, they kind of, you know, maybe, you know, try to keep it quiet and stuff like that, but fair, it's fair. Okay, when you got people that, that entitled, you know, the, the federal government has also put out, the state already said that they entitled to, uh, this, this tax rate, you know, I think we should notify them and give, and set up. You know, I asked them today, wh- what do they go to get these? You know, you got Mario, he comes in once every Wednesday, okay, and we have all these people that, that be trying to get these forms and things, and then they, they say, go to the water department, but the water department don't have these forms, okay? So I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I, our job is to service the people. You know, regardless they're rich or poor, you know, we, 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 we serve them. If they entitled to a tax break, then I think they should have, get the proper forms and, and, and place them in, you know? I'm just, I just don't believe in the game playing this man play. I really don't. And so I, I would hope that you look into that matter with the assessors and, uh, and, uh, kind of straighten it out a little bit.
Yes. We'll do the, we, yep, we'll definitely get on top of that to the best of our ability.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I know, I know Carolyn, um, had put out and, um, forms, I don't know if that form is there, uh, Reverend Williams, but she put out in the vest of you, you know, a, a series of forms. Uh, Mr. Chair, I know you could probably speak to it. Um, that's, you know, you know, first when the citizens come in, I don't know if that form is on there. Uh, but she did a great job in, you know, organizing that and put forms up so that, you know, you won't have to go around just trying to look for forms or go to different departments. Uh, it's, it's, it's kind of underutilized because, you know, people probably just walk right past it, but it, it's there, uh, in City Hall, so. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Mr. Chair.
No, I mean, just like you just said, I mean, all those forms can be found right in the front vest of you. Uh, we'll be working with our city clerk. I know that's one of the things that she, you know, came in and just started to look to organize, you know, all of our forms. It's related to all the different departments and where they should be going and how they should be flowing. So, uh, that was one of the things that, you know, that we initiated right off to be able to have, you know, people to have access to the forms without having to go directly to the departments, and if they went to the departments, we can just send them, you know, back over there. So that's one of the things that, uh, too, with our volunteer, uh, Mr. Rob sitting at the front desk there, that he's doing and, uh, making sure that people are getting that information coming in and out the door. He's doing a very good job doing that. So, um, we'll just continue to get the information out and see where the gaps are, you know, with people receiving that information and, and, and understanding, um, that we do have a contract with WCA going to be here one day a week. We can still, you know, maybe it's some type of, you know, I'm looking in, I'm looking into a kiosk to be in the lobby area, so, you know, folks can, and in turn, use that kiosk to punch in or, you know, leave a message for someone, you know, with the, you know, email or whatever it may be. So then they can get that information that they're looking for, or even being able to search that information.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, let, let me say this. I, I, I don't want to be, be lazy, but, 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 you know, I don't want nobody to take anything out of context. I understand we got information and everything of what we do in the City Hall, how, how they, but what I'm talking about, okay, we never even, even published about the people in the new tax structure that we have, okay? That people are entitled to. Okay?
Oh, okay, that's something that, okay. That's something that I don't know, I, I, I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Reverend Williams, but maybe it's something that me and you need to sit down and talk about so I can see exactly what you're talking about.
Well, I, I'll see, I'll see you whenever.
Okay. We'll get you into tomorrow. Let's figure it out, because you're saying there's some of the people that needs, if it's tax breaks or whatever it is.
And, and, and the procedure, who they should give them to.
Okay.
Need a tax assessor, and it's not happening.
Okay.
And I'd just be frank with you, I don't blame the tax assessor. He's trying to get all he can get.
Okay, I understand. Is that all, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uncle Mayor Protim Howard? Mayor Protim Howard?
Okay, hi, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Uh, in regards to the special meeting, we have to make plans to, um, come together and find out when we're gonna do it. Now, when did you say the last day that we can do this first write-off refusal?
Is, uh, is Friday, the twenty-third. But in the business day, we need to let the county know if we're going to participate in the program. And then, you know, if we are, then that following week, um, by the thirtieth, um, all of the developers, employees, whoever, you have to have their funds into us, so then we could pay the county those properties.
Okay, now I know administration. Okay, now I know administration has changed, but the developers who was active. Has anyone went around to any of those locations to see if those properties are being kept up?
Yeah, yeah, I actually had a chance to with Mrs. Fleming and uh Caitlin Hines were um over the project when they were here to get out before COVID. And see a number of different, you know, projects and renovations. And I know that through the building department, because the developers know that this was coming up. A lot of them have been coming in and, you know, trying to pull permits, whatever the things and pay taxes and things of that nature. So. That's one of the things that we will, by the time we meet on Thursday. We, we've been, we've been gearing up for this. So by the time we meet on Thursday, we'll be able to, you know, answer all of those questions. But, you know, to get that information to the council in a timely manner for you guys to review it as, as well.
Okay, because I'm, I'm just looking at the catch rank and just seeing after uh, I think it's after a year if nothing has been done.
Yeah, the city can act or revert back to the city.
Right, right, right.
Your attorneys to do that. So it's still cost us money to do that.
Okay, so is it possible that the um, the council can get a copy of the checklist where. Um, the city of Inster have, have. Has went out to each one of these properties and made a checklist for us because we, you know, we relying on you. Um, to tell us, but I think that would be good too to put in the pack. If you have a manpower to do it.
Yeah, exactly. I really appreciate you saying that. We're gonna do the best of our ability to make that happen. At the same time, we relying on integrity. Those folks coming in and, you know, paying the taxes. You know, we have one that frankly took on, um, we have one NSP developer that frankly took on. You know, like fourteen properties and do, didn't do anything with them at all. Um, you know, and they were just sitting there vacant on the tech, ready to go back to the tax foreclosure. List two, two to three years later. So know that we're on top of that as it relates to going out and looking to see. Because what we don't want to do is, you know, had the same thing happen again, you know?
Right.
And, and, and we want to put things, we want to get our neighborhoods looking good. And these properties are only the properties that the county identified that were vacant. Uh, for foreclosure. So when you said you, you know, in the properties that you saw, properties that were boarded up. These are properties that were considered vacant by the county. So these aren't the actual, all of the foreclosures. Because if they were occupied, the county didn't foreclose on those.
Okay, okay. So, so what you saying, telling me that all of the house, the list that you gave us. All of these problems, some of them didn't look like it was boarded up. Some of them looked like they was living in. I mean, from the picture, from the internet, now I'm not sure how.
Yeah.
How, I know we had the discussion last time, um, that some, some people were still living in those homes. When uh, when we did that the first time.
County this time, ma'am, and they did only. They went out and identified through how they did their, um, you know, the method of identifying if the properties have been. Are, are, are vacant. So that's, this is from the county. So, you know, I'll try to, uh, also to have someone on from the county. To speak and answer any questions that you may have if we decide to meet on Thursday.
Okay, yes, I would like that because um, I do know there's some, some, I'm not sure what the law is. But I do know once your house has been foreclosed, I think the, uh, the owner, the previous owner has a certain amount of time to redeem that. So I'm just making sure we not getting into all of that.
He's a part of, oh, these are, these are, these are foreclosed. This, this, the redemption process is passed already. These are all the properties that's listed on the Wayne County website for the general public to see. Um, what you, what you all have is non-redeemable. These are all, the county has went through, nothing on them. You know, the, what you see as it relates to the dollar amount is what's owed to the county. And then we go from there.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. That's all I have. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry, one more thing. I would like to, um, this past weekend. Um, I'd like to, to thank DPS. Um, I had to make a call because the citizen were calling about the basement being flooded. And in the process of me talking, the phone was ringing off the hook. And I'm quite sure uh, the police department and fire department probably had the same calls, but I'd just like to thank all of them. Took care of the residents and uh. We had a lot, so, you know, hopefully uh, this is it. But I do want our residents to look out for our elderly. Because you can, if you know where they live at and you notice there's nothing out. Set out, that means either they don't have anybody to help clean up or um. They just didn't do it or didn't have anything in the basement. So I'm not sure how we would do that. And let FEMA know or FEMA went by these houses, but I'm, I do know I recognized a neighbor. Flooded and didn't have anybody to clean the basement out. So maybe we could try, I don't know how we would do that, but if this neighbor should just call in and just say, hey, somebody live next door to me that's elderly. I didn't see anything set out to the flood. I just don't want our na, our elderly to be in the house and getting sick because they don't have anybody to clean the basement. Okay?
Cup, I know that Cup is working with uh Denise Champagne.
Okay.
Angela Ward is, 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 is doing that. Um, at the same time, I thank you for that because you're, you're right. So we're gonna do the best to our ability, even with code enforcement. Um, we'll talk with them and, and have them eyes and the ears in the course to police and, and so on, all of our staff.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome. Just to speak to that, um, uh, for me, um, as it relates to the city of Inster, we talk about, you know, just. The flooding that has been happening and, you know, for any rains. And know that it's not just the city of Inster alone. It's the surrounding communities as a whole. You know, most of our infrastructure is over fifty years old. So, you know, Mister Bivins is, we've had special meetings talking about infrastructure and not kicking the can down the road. Um, you know, right now, I think the, the buzzword in the country is infrastructure. So know that we'll be working with Mister Bivins along with uh Wayne County, the state of Michigan. Um, and then the federal government to petition to get some monies in the city of Inster for relief for infrastructure for our citizens. So we don't have to put it on to the water bills because that's what's gonna happen. We don't get money for infrastructure in the city. In order for us to solve those problems that we've been having historically for years. We're going to have to up the water rates in order to put new infrastructure in to be able to stop the flooding and these incidents that's happening. And we have godlike events, like we've been having all of this rain. At the same time, you know, people just, we, we, we're aware of, of Gertrude Court and other things that are happening. Um, within our community that, you know, that we're definitely aware of, that we want to make sure that we do to the best of our ability. To take care of you a, a, as citizens without having to encumber those taxes. Um, want to applaud the, the Inster Police Department under the leadership of Chief Riley. And Assistant Chief Ratliff for each year putting on a stellar program for our fallen officers uh within our community. On this past uh Friday, we had a ceremony for memorial service that was well attended. Um, our staff members attended as well and, and they were honored in such a way that we want to continue to honor them. So I'm gonna be bringing some things before the body as it relates to that, to continue to honor our fallen heroes within our community. Also, lastly, um, I want to thank President Biden. Um, our, our great governor, Governor Whitmer, um, Warren Evans, and then his team. Glenn Anderson, our Wayne County Commissioner, Representative Jewel Jones. Our Senator Betty Jean Alexander and our Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib for fighting for. Not only Inster but for Wayne County as it relates to um. Our area being declared for national disaster and getting relief from FEMA. So if you've had any damages in the last forty-five days, as it relates to the flooding that happened on June the twenty-sixth. You want to go to FEMA dot gov and their claim form is there. It's numbered there that you can reach and talk to those folks. We do have that information up on our website, on our access channel. Um, we'll make sure we make a flyer, get it out uh within the community and start circulating it in our stores and things of that nature. Because we want to take advantage of that. Even if you had insurance, you got all your stuff paid for, your stuff is nice and clean and neat. We still want you to apply for FEMA assistance because this just doesn't happen. It just doesn't come around all the time. So let's thank them for their efforts and their leadership and for fighting for us um here in this area. With that being said, if all minds are satisfied, I'll call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
The mood that supported, all the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Everyone have a great weekend. I'm sorry, weekend, great week. Try to get to a weekend, all right. Thank you. City clerk, you still, you, you coming down now? You staying in a little bit? You coming out? You leaving out? You leaving out right now?
Soon as I wrap it up, yes.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait for you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm trying to get out of, here we go, leave.